Elk Grove, so, you three do? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Trustees, Village Staff members, the public, thank you very much for having me tonight.
John, excuse me, I don't mean to be rude. Maggie, can you turn the microphone so people can...
Okay.
Okay, thank you, John.
Again, thank you very much, I'm not sure if you can...
You don't have to lean that far, you're fine. There's four more for the TV station than us.
Okay, my name is John McCabe, I'm the Director of the Department of Resource Management at the Forest Preserves of Cook County, and again, thank you very much for allowing me to provide this presentation to you tonight. So, the Forest Preserves has been, over the last couple of months, going out and around to local municipalities within Cook County, just to say hello, so, first thing I want to get off the table here is that I'm not here asking you for anything tonight, except a few minutes of your time, just to touch base with you. As Mayor Johnson alluded to, we consider the Village of Elk Grove a great partner, and I'll talk about some of that as we move through the presentation today. Wanted to start with the district's mission, I'm not going to read this word for word, but I'd like to focus on some of the key points that at least, we like to talk about, restore and manage lands, protecting and preserving, education, pleasure, and recreation of the public, being available and providing these services. What a lot of people don't know is, we were established in 1915, we are the oldest and largest forest preserve in the United States. When you think about that, in the second most populated county in the United States, that's pretty impressive, the Forest Preserves of Cook County makes up about eleven percent of the total land within the County of Cook. The strategic plan that sort of mentioned on the agenda there, I wanted to touch base on this, I didn't want to go into a whole lot of detail about it, but the Next Century Conservation Plan, which was put in place in 2014 by General Superintendent Arnold Randall and the President of the Forest Preserve District of Cook County Board, Tony Preckwinkle. And I know it's hard to believe, as I just talked about the fact that the Forest Preserves is a hundred years old, but we never had a strategic plan that set a course like the Next Century for Conservation Plan. So, this sets out goals, really from a twenty-five-year perspective, so, that's sort of hard to think about, even though now I've been at the Forest Preserve almost thirty years, it's hard to think twenty-five years out, that's very important in the conservation field, I'll talk about that a little bit more in an upcoming couple of slides here. Bussy Woods, I know it's a little hard to see right here, it's outlined a little bit in red, is sort of the municipal limits of Elk Grove, but I agree with Mayor Johnson, we view Bussy Woods as part of Elk Grove Village, no doubt about it. These are just a couple pictures of Bussy Woods, for those of you who haven't been out there recently, how many of you use Bussy Woods or been out on a trail or picnic there? That's great, that's great. This is a view from the South Pool Dam, looking east across the lake. This is Bussy Woods North, the dedicated nature preserve within the property. Again, the part of the nature preserve, this is a wet wood, which is an extremely rare habitat in our Forest Preserve as a whole, we only have a few hundred acres of this particular habitat. And then, one of the more famous and popular aspects of our Forest Preserve, especially Bussy Woods, is the elk pen and the elk herd, which of course, I don't know, I think we're going to have a run for our money with that tech park you guys are opening with all the elk over there. Have to make sure we have a sign pointing towards our elk pen for the live ones, pretty nice looking. As I mentioned, I want to just go in a little more detail on a couple of the key components of that Next Century Conservation Plan. So Superintendent Randall and President Preckwinkle pulled together community members, key partners of ours, recognized experts in the field of conservation to help design this plan, and it focused on these key areas. Nature, what I consider the most important component, of course, is the Director of Resource Management. People, leadership, peace, and economy. Nature and people, we can't have the nature piece without the support of the people, and that's one of the reasons we're here today, is to talk to you about the Forest Preserve, to make sure we can continue to have your support, so that we can keep the Forest Preserve up and running the way it has been, especially over the last couple of years. Leadership, we need to set sort of a precedent, we all know with the political atmosphere, administrations change and then direction changes. The hope of this Next Century Conservation Plan was to sort of set a path that hopefully the next administration would recognize, was put together by people who weren't crossing partisan lines, and that it was a positive thing, and stay the course. Economy, we want people to recognize what the Forest Preserve provides, even if you're not a user of the Forest Preserve, and I think this village has done a phenomenal job of recognizing the value of the Forest Preserve, and the fact that we are the busiest, Bussy Woods is the busiest Forest Preserve in our entire system. With the thirty-two picnic groves, and you've been, just go through there on a Saturday in July, and see the thousands, tens of thousands, even up to a hundred thousand people at some of these picnics, those people are buying things at Elk Grove Businesses, and then coming to the Forest Preserve. The people who are using our trail, are using the local bike shop, are using the local businesses, and then visiting the Forest Preserve. So, you guys have done a phenomenal job of recognizing the Forest Preserve as an economic driver. The bridge that was put in on the west end of the bike trail is unbelievable, that trail was already the best trail in our system, that sealed the deal hands down, where you have a seven-mile loop in a county of five point two million people where you do not cross a major road. You can't ride a length of trail like that without crossing a road, and not to mention the beauty that you have while you're riding that particular trail system, so, kudos to your team for partnering with us and really doing a heavy lifting on that piece.
And John, if I can, just so you know, we were just talking about, we're going to soon this summer have access from Northwest Point, our business center, directly across that stoplight into the trail, and then another one at Landmeyer?
I thought it was Oakton.
I thought it was Oakton. Yeah, Oakton-Landmeyer.
I think it's Landmeyer, right? Well, those three of them were on the table, I know, Landmeyer, Oakton, and the north end.
Yeah, well, one of them, either Oakton-Landmeyer, we'll have that built this year, we now connect, so, that gives people more access into the woods in a safe, efficient way to utilize more, because you're exactly right, John, that Bussy Woods, that trail, everything, that's gold. I'm not sure you ever heard the statistic, we had heard before, that more people visit Bussy Woods every year than Yellowstone Park.
That's true, that's the numbers that we have, and the new numbers we had with some research we did over the last couple of years, to the Forest Preserve is a total of over sixty million visitors in a given year, so that's a pretty impressive number across the district. I mean, the other, the bridge that was put in on the west side as well, that connects the west side of Elk Grove across fifty-three, was a great addition, and I know, having a lot of friends on that side as a local resident, a lot of people are using that as well to access not only the trail, but then this side of Elk Grove.
And the people need to know, Elk Grove Village is the one that funded, or got funding for, to put all three bridges in, that was done by our community, and we're proud of done it, we are.
Absolutely.
Thank you, John.
Excellent work. I want to point out right up here in the upper left-hand corner, this restored thirty-thousand acres to the highest quality of ecological health. Again, as I said, the people who put this plan together were some conservation experts, but generally, community people and stuff like that. When I heard that goal, to do, restore thirty-thousand acres in twenty-five years, I mean, I was like, holy smokes. You know, when I started this job twenty-five years ago, I was six foot two with a full head of hair, look at me now, that really set me back, but, it was a good opportunity for us, even though it's a really ambitious goal, to be able to do this work that I've always sort of wanted to do here at the Forest Preserve. And, as we jump into this next section, the four sort of main habitats that we talk about, when we talk about restoration work, are woodlands, savannas, wetlands, and prairies. And, these four buckets, while not all of them are at Bussy Woods in particular, mainly the woodland situation is what we have, especially up there on the north end, that you see, and of course, the wetland piece, which Bussy provides a big help there. Threatening endangered species, if the Forest Preserves of Cook County were not here, a lot of these threatening endangered species would not be here either. Heinz Emerald dragonfly, and so, both on the flora and the fauna side of things. And the bigger animals that most people see, like the bald eagle, which we have nesting up there in Bussy Woods, which I know is pretty popular, and people are always interested in seeing them. The Blanding's turtle, not very exciting, so to speak, but for us to have these federally endangered species out there is cool. And the North American river otter, well, that's not an endangered species, they have only returned to the area recently, and we have them in Bussy Woods now. So, that's a sign of a good, healthy fishery and other sort of populations like your amphibians and frogs, that they like to eat. And then, of course, the not-so-threatening endangered species, I'm sure you have all heard plenty about skunks in the neighborhood, and raccoons, and coyotes, and then deer is another popular one that we get a lot of questions about. So, even though I don't really have a wildlife background, I have become an expert in responding to questions about skunks, raccoons, deer, and coyotes. And, those are cute coyotes when they're little puppies, we do a lot of work with our wildlife team with these types of animals, and so, we're happy to respond to any questions or concerns you get from local citizens, you can feel free to direct those to the Forest Preserve, we are happy to take those phone calls and respond. Our wildlife biologist, Senior Wildlife Biologist Chris Anker is also a resident of Elk Grove Village, so he'll be happy to take those calls twenty-four-seven for you. And that's on TV, I think he'll be watching at home. Ecosystem services, so I want to just touch base on that piece real quick, so, not everybody does use the Forest Preserve, we recognize that, but we're all benefiting from the ecosystem services that it provides. Number one, cleaning our air, number two, it's a cooling effect to the heat island that see a development that surrounds Bussy Woods, it helps provide that. And then, storm water, think about the water issues that we have, that's another thing that we worked very closely with the village on, is the dam modification. Think about all the storm water management, there's a statistic, and I can't prove this, but I'd heard, when we were doing some work on storm water stuff a number of years ago, that eighty percent of the water that moves across Cook County at some point comes through the Forest Preserve. And so, whether it's through the Displanes River, or some of the other offshoots like Salt Creek, that's probably pretty close. So, even just those couple of key things, provide benefits to people who maybe aren't a regular user. So, I mentioned the restoration piece, and that thirty-thousand acre goal, so one of the things that we did after the Next Century Conservation Plan was created, this Natural and Cultural Resources Master Plan, the main focus of that was prioritizing and deciding how we were going to restore the thirty-thousand acres. And so, we're in a much better place now, as I stand here in 2019, and we've identified those thirty-thousand acres, we have a plan, and we are executing it, we are doing work across that to the tune of about ten thousand of those thirty-thousand acres where we're actively working. Bussy Woods, sections of that, were identified as the number-three top priority site across the Forest Preserve District, and we have been actively working, especially in the north side, north of Higgins, in Illinois Nature Preserve area, over the last couple of winters. Just as an example, again, it's not very clear on this, but a before-and-after photo, this is up at Deer Grove Forest Preserve in Palatine, where you have a lot of the invasive brush in the understory, and then, three years later, after clearing the brush out, the recovery that you see. Prescribed fire, this is another thing that, from a support issue, we're here asking for your support, this is a prescribed burn that we were doing, fall of 2017, this is looking westbound along Higgins Road, at Bussy Woods. Later, sort of right as we're finishing this particular unit, it's a little bit dark out, but a very successful burn that day. We have had a lot of support in our interactions with the local fire department, they actually responded to this fire, as you could imagine, even though we make our notifications, they get a certain number of calls, they're coming out to make sure everything's okay. And they did respond to this particular fire, and we had a very good conversation, they're very supportive of our work. Stewardship, that's another way we engage a lot of folks in and around the Forest Preserve, whether it's through our ecological stewardship program, which Dave Simmons here participates in, as well as many other Elk Grove residents, where we have a dedicated stewardship group out in Bussy Woods. And so, those folks are coming out on every other Saturday to Bussy Woods to do stewardship work to remove invasive species. There's other types of volunteering you can do, if you like, a lot of volunteers like to seed collect, we also have a trail watch program, we have a lot of active members from the local community here in Elk Grove that are trail watchers at Bussy Woods, that's been a very positive program for us as well. Most people know us through the outdoor recreation piece, though. So, I talk about the birds and the bees and all the stuff that I really enjoy, but this is really where we engage most of the general public, is this outdoor recreation piece. As you know, Bussy Woods has a seven-mile loop, plus the other trail spurs, adds up to almost fifteen miles in trail. This isn't all at Bussy, of course, but just a general accounting of some of our major attractions, but to focus on Bussy a little bit, as I mentioned, thirty-two picnic groves, the bike trail, we have the new boathouse that was opened a couple of years ago, that's been very successful with the canoe and kayak rental. Again, those people are coming here to rent canoes and kayaks, but then they're going to get something to eat at your local restaurants, putting gas in their car at the gas stations, all that good stuff. We have three aquatic centers across the Forest Preserve, ten golf courses, we have an airplane field up on the north end of Bussy Woods, cross-country skiing, some sledding hills, no foot and disc golf stuff around here. Five campground locations, we recently redid those as part of our centennial celebration. The nearest one to here is Camp Reinburg, up at Deer Grove, here's Bussy Woods right here. If you have not had an opportunity, which, has anybody camped there? Okay, it's a nice, easy way to get away for the weekend, if you're looking to do something with the kids or the grandkids, and not drive to Wisconsin, or Michigan, or Indiana, relatively expensive, and I'm telling you, it's a very, very nice setup, very nice. So, five new campgrounds have been, we've had over a hundred and fifty thousand people use those now in the last three years, so, it's been a very positive endeavor for us. The six nature centers that the district has, these are what I refer to as our true gateways to the general public, the Little Red Schoolhouse is our most famous one, down in the Payless region, but we also have one very nearby here, Crabtree Nature Center. And almost all of the activities that you do there, every day, is free, access, there's no entrance fee or anything like that, you park in a parking lot, go to the nature center, walk the trails, talk to a naturalist, all at no cost. The district does a lot of education and outreach, we go to schools, schools come to us for science-based education, whether it's related to conservation, or something that that particular group is interested in, we have a lot of school groups that come out and do invasive species work on our property, we provide community service for high school students as well. Special events, I know for a couple of years, we hosted the pow-wow event here at Bussy Woods, but we have a lot of special event, large-scale picnics, again, where we have a lot of users that are using the village as well. Two other partners of ours that people don't realize are part of the Forest Preserve, is the Brookfield Zoo, that's on Forest Preserve property, and have been a partner of ours since nineteen thirty-four, and the Chicago Botanic Garden is on Forest Preserve property, and has been a partner of ours since they opened in the early nineteen seventies. We do a lot of work in conjunction with those two organizations, and just world-class organizations, the Brookfield Zoo is the third highest tourist attraction in the Chicago region, after, it's Millennium Park now and Navy Pier. So, a hundred-plus years, and again, I'm here today to ask you for your continued support, to make sure that we're here for a hundred more, and I'm hoping that this video plays, as you can see the transition from development, from where we were back in the late eighteen-hundreds to where we are today, and recognize that if we didn't set apart, set aside these Forest Preserves, starting back in nineteen fifteen, that this entire map would likely be red. And so, I'm here to challenge you today to continue to support the Forest Preserve, so we can make sure that this map stays at least as green as it is, and maybe a little bit And thank you very much for your time.
John, so you're saying that eleven percent of the ground area in Alka County is Forest Preserve land?
Yes, sir.
That's amazing, that's a lot more than I ever, that's a lot, that's good, that's good. Any questions for John?
Hi, you said the botanical gardens and the Brookfield Zoo are part of the Forest Preserve system, do the funds they collect for admittance, do some of those funds go, get diverted back to the Forest Preserve?
They do not, so, the Forest Preserve District is part of our operating budget, we provide funding to the zoo and the botanic garden, they do not provide funding back to us, but as part of our relationship, there's in-kind services that they do provide. So, that's sort of how we work together with them on that front.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for John?
I just have a comment, thank you for all your help that you've given to their bicycle group, with supporting us when we have the bike ride through Bussy Woods, that's been wonderful, and couldn't do it without you guys supporting us.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, you know, friends of Elk Grove Cycling, and a lot of our other partners are a big help to us, too, and just thank you very much for all you do.
I'd be thankful, when we had the bike race at one time, I was hoping to have the time trowel on Bussy Woods off path, which means you were going to close the entire woods off for about three hours, I figured, you would never go for it, so that's why I backed away, so, you're safe.
I would have went for it.
Yeah, thank you, and tell Arnold we said hi, too, we appreciate, we've had a great, I gotta say, first off, John's part of Elk Grove, even though his crusts caused, we're still part of Elk Grove, but we've had a great partnership with the woods, and Bussy Woods, and President Preckwinkle, who was on the dam project, and Arnold and all that, it's been a good partnership, we've given, you've given, it's a win-win, so we want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate, thank you, John. Okay, Mr. Dallas, you're up, not to be rude, not sound rude, fifteen minutes, buddy, that's all we got, okay, fifteen minutes. We got ComEd, if you want the lights on, ComEd's waiting for a public hearing at six forty-five, so, that's why they'll flip the lights off on you. I know, I know it's hard for you, that's why I'm telling you in advance, my friend.
Listen, listen to that.
So, we have John Dallas from the Enclave here today, the presentation update, John, all yours.
Thank you. I am delighted to be here, and thank you very much for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and Trustees, and leaders. There's a principle that we apply at Enclave, it's called "three times," and this is based on three times things have to be said, for the adult learner to remember it, so, in Enclave, as we begin a class, we ring the old school bell three times, we say, "Welcome, welcome, welcome." Today, I want to say three times, thank you to the mayor and to the trustees for authorizing this experiment in entrepreneur education. Number two, thank you to the professional managers of Elk Grove Village for supporting this experiment in entrepreneur education. Number three, thank you for the founding sponsors, contributors, volunteers, and other supporters for this experiment in entrepreneur education. So, if you ask, what is this, it's an experiment in entrepreneur education, three times. Should I ask anybody if they need a repeat?
What?
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 What? So, but I do want to say, and please bear with me on this, because I want this to be indelibly etched, that no other community is known to have a competence development program for entrepreneurs, no other community is known to have a competence development program for entrepreneurs, none, no other community is known to have such a program. And this is coming from Kellogg School's professors, who gathered one day, as some of you know, and they looked around the table after they heard the whole plan that had evolved, and the question was, do you know of any other program in the world that has anything like this? And there was a little bit of arrogance in this moment, where they said something along the lines, "We travel the world, we're consultants, we know who we are, do we now know who Enclave is in Elk Grove Village?" And, the good news and the bad news was, they all said, "We were first." The bad news for me, as a seasoned businessperson, is I didn't want to be first, I wanted to have someone else that we could look at, so we could learn from, so we wouldn't have to make the mistakes. So, let me quickly say that we have absolutely developed, as a result of this, a really strong relationship with the Kellogg School of Business at Northwestern University. As many of you know, our speakers are coming from that group, the University of Chicago pals that I've had for many years are not too happy with that, but we're about to change that imbalance, but I also want you to be aware of, that other communities are really quick to acknowledge what we're doing here in Elk Grove Village. So, Naperville, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Glenco, and nearly all the north shore communities are paying close attention to what we're doing here, and they find it fascinating. The Rotary Clubs in several of those cities have had us there to speak. I just taped a radio program, or a television program for Naperville last week, and they've invited me back for two more TV programs in Naperville, that'll be the first time they've ever had the same speaker back three times. And the reason for this is because they are so intrigued by the focus on the individual versus the venture. So, accelerators and incubators focus on the venture, we don't, we focus first, on the person, second, on the venture, and third, on profitability. We've had the privilege of talking to Rotary Clubs in Lake Bluff and Lake Forest, and the feedback from the audience, as a few of you have heard me say before, was just astounding in the depth of their questions, their curiosity. It saddens me that we haven't been invited yet to speak in Elk Grove Village, to the Rotary Club, or to the Lions Club, or to any of our home-based places here, but we have been invited elsewhere, and there have been many discussions about speaking here in the Rotary Club, and we believe that'll happen eventually. But here, what we've done is used social media to the max, through Josh Grodson's efforts, I think I've appeared four or five times on the podcast program, talking from the very beginning about what we're doing, talking about how the trustees, and the professional managers, and the mayor have all been involved. So, those things are on the website for Elk Grove Village. Video content has been added to the village website from Enclave, and I hope you have a chance to take a look at it. But, as I did with the mayor the other day, and with Ray, and Matt, and Maggie in the room at the same time, we talked about the shadow side of any startup, no startup is without disappointment, no startup is without surprises. And nothing in our forecast, as we got into this program, suggested we were at risk of losing cash, and I'm talking about personal cash, not village cash. Until we recovered grants or other means of revenue generation, we invested cash of over a hundred and fifty thousand of personal money, and this is out of my personal pocket, to get this program off the ground, we lost over three hundred thousand dollars worth of billing from companies in the city, from clients in the city, who would not make the trek out here, that we underestimated, we thought they wouldn't mind coming out to Elk Grove Village, but it occurred that when they come out for the travel out I-90, and then they have a meeting here, and the travel back, that they're allocating a half-day for what in the city would take them two hours. So, they just couldn't do that, so a lot of telephone calls have happened, so it's been quite a lesson. But, you may find it interesting, because there's a bit of a misunderstanding, that not one single piece of business, not one single piece of business has come my way as a result of this project, not one. There's never been a person who has hired us to coach, or has hired us to consult, as a result of this program, and we're okay with that, because we didn't come out here to generate business for our business, for our existing ventures. So, the fact is, that we're volunteers, and we've been volunteers for over two years. Some think I'm making money at seven, I've heard it several times, you're making lots of money over there, oh my gosh, I don't know where that dream is coming from, it's not coming from my bank account or my accountant, but something, I'm losing more money and making less money, frankly, since you're friends, than at any time in my professional life, which began back in nineteen seventy-three in New York City, I have never been through this. I offer these facts for one reason, and one reason only, not to complain, but as proof positive of the sense of direction that we are headed. As a team, we are moving in the right direction, there's no doubt about that whatsoever. I've had the privilege in this period of time of getting to know Chief Michael, Chief Walsh, the leaders of the village, many of whom have been in Enclave, collaborating with us, thinking with us about what we're doing, so this team is still strong, and it's still worth staying true. But what is Enclave, and I passed out a description of Enclave, there's a reverse side that has a list of our programs, I want to quickly say that with this Burnham quote, "Make no little plans, they have no magic to stir men's blood," I took that seriously, and if you remember my first presentation here, we had big plans, many of those big plans have come into fruition, many of those will come into being in the future, but we never thought of this as a small thing, you didn't vote on this two years ago, as a small endeavor. So, we're very, very pleased with the progress we've made, disappointed with the delays and so forth. One of the things that happened to us, that we weren't prepared for, was the number of resignations, the number of terminations at the banks, at the bank that we work with, we had the Amida Health, that was back then, Alexian Brothers, the Director of Innovation was working with us on doing all the health side, the medical side of our model, of doing blood pressure screening, weight screening, health monitoring for opioid addiction, for anything that happens to the entrepreneur, that was all to be through Alexian. That was all to be through Alexian Brothers. And suddenly, they got rid of their innovation department, and we lost an ally. And so that hasn't been replaced. But I understand there's a new president at Amida Health, I hope to meet with him soon, and to invite his interest in collaborating with us, because the medical side, the health side of the entrepreneur is one of the most underappreciated sides of this whole concept of how do we support the individuals who create our new jobs and generate our new value in our communities. So this will be a really, really important part of what we're doing. On a brighter side, Enclave has now 12 podcasts that have been finished. I've listened to eight of them so far, I can't wait to hear the rest. They're all internally produced. As many of you know, we have a podcast production studio that's top-notch in our building, among other facilities, and so these are going to be offered for your website, and you can post them for your use, but they all speak very highly of the work that's being done here. So our social media presence is astounding to us. So far, our pages have over 13,000 followers. And what Twitter does, as you know, they give you a profile of who's following, and the median household net income of the people following this model is 2.2 million. These are CEOs, these are professors, these are magazines. And if any of you have any interest, the next time you're over at Enclave, I'll bring all that up on the screen, and you can take a look at it. But the reason this is significant is it's proof positive of the interest in what we're doing. So like Forbes Magazine, they have something called Forbes Small Business, maybe 50,000 people follow that. Forbes Magazine follows about 1,000, and that's, Enclave is one of those. So they're watching what we're doing. Kaufman Foundation, the largest foundation in the entrepreneurial research space, is watching what we're doing. So this is a really important signal that's coming through a modern technology, the social media. Our Facebook page gets good hits, we're very, very pleased with that feedback. Let me quickly say on a personal basis, today is day 635 for me, 635 on duty as a volunteer, a volunteer at 75 Turner Avenue. I have an app in here that Facebook owns called Swarm, and every time I get there, it taps me in, so I can see that. But we have had this building for 730 days, and what that means is that 87% of my time has been spent, my work time, has been spent in that building in those 730 days. And I'm saying that simply to resolve, to demonstrate the resolve that this is the way to do this. So as I said, our plans were big, but they weren't unreasonable, in my view. When I thought of a community of your size, the "beyond business friendly" motto, the things that your mayor has done to be a catalyst, to be a leader, to be a forecaster of great things for a community of this size, wow, wow, wow. When we had an opportunity to be out here, it made all the sense in the world. What we did not anticipate, again, on the truth serum side of this, we did not anticipate the lack of curiosity. So people who didn't come back, they would come into the building once and never come back. They knew we were building something grand and something big, and if you haven't been there recently, come on over, it's beautiful, it's a fascinating environment. But people didn't come back, and that was astounding to me. I hadn't seen that in my other business endeavors. So it was something we have to cure, and that's the way we cure things, through public relations, repetition of promotion, and things of this nature. So the notion of our experience setback after setback, and advancement after advancement, we will soldier on as long as you support what we're doing here. And please remember, we didn't expect to make money, but we didn't expect to lose money. That was the unexpected twist of this. So a lot of things that have happened, I've been on 14 ambassador visits with two of the more ambassadorial trustees, with Sam Lissner and Nancy Zarnick, and we're very pleased that Nancy has been kind enough to chair our advisory committee for the past year and a half now. And so we've had the privilege of getting out, and let me say very candidly, as many of you have heard, that when we go out to talk about Elk Grove Village, there aren't too many people who haven't grabbed on to the final part of those meetings, as Sam and Nancy would say, where we talk about what Enclave is doing for individual business owners. And they're interpreting that as Elk Grove Village is doing these things for individual business owners. And that's exactly the way I want it, I want Elk Grove Village to get the credit, and they do. So people are excited, and we hear things like, "We're surprised that a village is doing this kind of education work." So you actually have a village school for entrepreneurs on your premises. No other community does. There isn't a program like this. Accelerators don't work, incubators don't work in terms of the return on investment, and what this, we hope to prove, will work in the long run. We have played host to so many organizations on your behalf. We have had international visitors from Italy, from Mexico City, from the Ukraine, from Romania, I think Bulgaria, and several others. And I say with a little bit of humor, but certainly with great joy, that when we had the Chinese delegation there recently, with two interpreters, one on our end, to make sure that I wasn't being misinterpreted, or there wasn't any kind of censorship going on. But what a remarkable experience to walk them into our International Welcome Center, to explain our honorary co-founder's role in stimulating economic development over 30 years between Japan and the Midwest, and to explain all that to people from China and to other countries that have been in, and to see them light up to the idea that Elk Grove Village cares about countries in terms of their economic development, not only welcoming them as friends, welcoming them as tourists, but as possible partners to do business, and for them to come over here and learn, and for us to send delegations of entrepreneurs over there to learn from them. So it's very exciting. We've had meetings for just about every organization that would pop to your mind as having a connection to economic development. We've hosted these meetings. And what I mean hosted, we've done the work. They haven't paid to be there. We've paid for the catering, we've paid for the setup. We had a recent meeting where I paid for about 18 hours to clean up. That was the Select Chicago meeting, where we had about 70 people there from all the major communities around here, and they loved it. So they've decided, and this is good news and bad news for me, they've decided to have Enclave as their number-one facility. And I went, "Oh, great." So we're gonna have to talk to them about paying somehow. But the G-Camp and different organizations such as Access O'Hare West, they have their board meetings there routinely, and we host them on behalf of Elk Grove Village, and we're happy to do that. So because of the time constraints, what I thought would be good, since I know most of you fairly well, I'd just like to open it, any questions you might have within the context, and my genuine thanks for your support, and also, come visit. I have to say that on June 7th, I'd love to have you to lunch, you're going to get an invitation. My mother, who's 95, is flying in from Pittsburgh to have lunch at Enclave, so she said, "I want to meet everybody." I said, "All right, we'll get everybody over." So it'll be a fun experience, since her father, my grandfather, was an entrepreneur and for the federal government, an expert in small businesses. So it'll be a fascinating lunch to hear her reminiscing. So any questions that anybody has or comments?
John, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Is that 15?
We gotta keep going.
Yep, good.
Okay. There concludes the community hall meeting. We'll go up to our board meeting. Remember, we got a ComEd up there now for public hearing, then we'll go right to our board meeting. That top side coming up, notice that?